All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Anaheim Elementary School District February 24th Board Meeting. I am A E S D Board President Mark Lopez. I call this meeting to order at 5:30 P. M. This meeting is being conducted telephonically and by means of live video broadcast on our Anaheim Elementary YouTube channel for members of the public. Board members and cabinet members will be video conferencing together to assist in managing the logistics of the meeting. For English, you may connect by phone as follows. Please call four zero five. But trustee McCallis, I think you're on your mic is on. Thank you. Please call four zero five three five seven eight eight zero three. When prompted, type in the PIN seven eight nine nine one eight two zero four pound. Para español puede conectarse por teléfono de la siguiente manera. Llame al siete cero siete cuatro cero cuatro ocho seis siete uno. Cuando se le pida, presione el PIN nueve seis cuatro siete cuatro nueve cero dos dos. Y el símbolo pound. Any member of the public has the opportunity to address the board by submitting comments by 12 P. M. On Wednesday, February 24th, 2021, online via electronic form as outlined in the public speakers portion of this agenda. Submissions will be read aloud during the board meeting by the board president or designee. Let's begin with the board roll call. Item one, a board member, Dr. Paolo McGallas.
Hey, everyone. Good evening.
Thank you, Doc. Board member Ryan A. Relus.
Hello.
Board member Juan G. Alvarez.
Present. Hello.
Board clerk Jackie Philbeck.
Good evening, everyone. Hello, present.
Thank you, everyone. And again, I am board president Marque Lopez, also present. Item one B, public speakers for closed session agenda items. There are no public speakers tonight. And item two, adjournment to closed session. May I have a motion, please?
So move to closed session. This is Jackie Philbeck.
Second, Relus. Thank you. Motion by board clerk Philbeck, signed by trustee Relus. Any discussion? I guess there wouldn't be any discussion. Roll call vote, please. We'll go with Dr. McGallas.
I.
Thank you. Board member Relus.
I.
Board member Alvarez.
I.
Board clerk Philbeck.
I.
I also vote I. We will adjourn to closed session. Thank you. All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Anaheim Elementary School District February 24th Board Meeting. I am A E S D Board President Mark Lopez. I call this meeting to order at 6:31 P. M. This meeting is being conducted telephonically and by means of live video broadcast on our Anaheim Elementary YouTube channel for members of the public. Board meetings and cabinet, sorry, board members and cabinet members will be video conferencing together to assist in managing the logistics of the meeting. For English, you may connect by phone as follows. Call four zero five three five seven eight eight zero three. When prompted, type in the PIN seven eight nine nine one eight two zero four pound. Spanish interpretation of the board meeting is available to attendees. Para español puede conectarse por teléfono de la siguiente manera. Llame al siete cero siete cuatro cero cuatro ocho seis siete uno. Cuando se le pida, presione el PIN nueve seis cuatro siete cuatro nueve cero dos dos. Y el símbolo pound. A few reminders, please mute your microphones when you join the meeting. Unmute when you are announced to speak. And finally, it's important to honor everyone's voice while they are speaking, so please limit your chats during presentations. Board members, tonight, all voting will be by roll call vote. When motioning or seconding an item, please state your name. For any items being discussed, please state your name before discussing that item. Thank you. Item three A, let's begin with the flag salute. Dr. Downing.
Please stand, right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dr. Downing.
Thank you.
Item three B, our introductions and roll call. Dr. Paolo McGallas, board member.
Here. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening. Thank you. Board member Ryan A. Relus.
Present.
Board member Juan G. Alvarez.
Present.
Board clerk Jackie Philbeck.
Present. Hi, everyone.
Hello, and I am board, I didn't forget my name, board president Marque Lopez. I had to flip the page. Dr. Downing, superintendent, Dr. Downing.
Good evening, everyone.
Dr. Mary Grace, Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services.
Good evening.
Deana Mellon, Assistant Superintendent, Human Resources.
Good evening.
Jessie Chavaria, Assistant Superintendent of Administrative Services.
Good evening, everyone.
Tracy Golden, our Senior Director of School Safety and Operations.
Good evening.
Iris Camacho, Senior Administrative Assistant.
Hi, everybody.
We also have Mary Madrigal and Alina Avila Roque, our interpreters.
Good evening.
Good evening.
And Janice Cato, our Technology Support Technician.
Good evening, everyone.
All right. Good evening. Thank you, everyone. Item three C, our report on closed session actions taken. There are none. Item three D, adoption of our agenda. May I get a motion?
So moved. Relus.
Second, Alvarez.
Moved by board member Relus, seconded by board member Alvarez. Any discussion? Seeing none. Dr. McGallas.
I.
Thank you. Board member Relus.
I.
Board member Alvarez.
I.
Board clerk Philbeck.
I.
Also vote I, passes five zero. Item four, Special Order of Business. We have item four A, Facility Master Plan Update, presented by Jim James Kissel, LPA Inc., Jomei Liao, LPA Inc., Isella Vasquez, Senior Director of Facilities Planning and Construction, and Jessie Chavaria, Assistant Superintendent of our Administrative Services.
Good evening, Board President Lopez and members of the board. Last November, we came to the board and explained that we were close to completing the construction work at both Roosevelt and Sanchez. And the facilities team was looking for direction from the board to begin the planning process for our next projects. We also had Tim Cardy speak to the board on the potential next bond issuance plan to support the funding of these new projects. At the time, we informed the board that we would have our LPA, our architects, come to you this month in February to give you an update on the facility's master plan in order to inform you of the potential projects and their priority. The objective tonight in our presentation is to give you that information and then to come back to you on March 10th for direction in terms of our next projects and also for the potential next bond issuance to fund these projects. So I'm going to turn it over now to Isella Vasquez, our Senior Director of Facilities Planning and Construction, who will introduce our architects as well as give you additional information. Isella?
Thank you. Good evening, Board President Lopez, board members, superintendent Dr. Downing, cabinet members and guests. It's a pleasure to be here this evening. I'd also like to thank you for the opportunity to have our architect, LPA, present the facility master plan update. The purpose of the update is to ensure the facility's master plan remains relevant by reflecting any changes in the educational program since 2016 so that it continues to be an effective planning tool for the implementation of projects. Some of the steps that were taken to accomplish this included meeting with school principals, directors and administrators from the Educational Services Department, community stakeholders from the Measure G and J Citizens Oversight Committee. We also looked at current enrollment trends. We met with Tim Cardy, our financial advisor, to assess the available funding sources. And with that said, joining us tonight, as Mr. Chavaria mentioned, Jim Kissel, Principal Architect, and Jomei Liao, Project Manager with LPA. It's now my pleasure to turn it over to Jim to begin the presentation.
Thanks, Isella. And good evening, board members, superintendent, district staff and community. My name is Jim Kissel, and I'm a principal and director of school planning with LPA. And also with me tonight is Jomei Liao, an educational facilities planner and architect here at LPA. If we could go to the next slide. Our agenda is to review what was the purpose of the master plan, to expand on what Isella was just talking about. Review the scope of work categories. Reviews, review some of the proposed site diagrams. Go through the program cost summary and then look at the priorities of the district and as well as the financial analysis and marry up the priorities of the district with the funding analysis as prepared by Tim Cardy. We're going to go to the next slide. In terms of the purpose of the master plan, next slide. It was to collaborate with district and site stakeholders. We wanted to update the category one, two, and three master plan diagrams. We wanted to revise the cost estimates to $20,000 and then also look forward into the prioritized projects. How would the escalation affect those going into the future? Examine the funding sources, align the dollars to the project costs, and establish potential for the next phase of work priorities. If we go to the next slide. In terms of the three categories, there was a number of schools, I think, of 13 in total that were studied as part of this master plan update. And category one was modernization and reconstruction. So that includes in that category the James M. Gwynn Campus, Patrick Henry, Olive Street, and Adelaide Price. And category two are the sites that would receive potentially a new NPR Student Services and Library. And that's Clara Barton, Benjamin Franklin, Benito Juarez, Loera, and Paul Revere. And in Paul Revere, that was an NPR scope only. And then in category three, that's Student Services and Library addition to those campuses. And in the case of working with the stakeholders, four of the sites actually decided to proceed with an NPR in lieu of doing the Student Services and Library. So it's Thomas Edison, it's a Student Services and Library addition. And then the other four campuses, Gower, Jefferson, Madison, and Westmont, it would be the addition of an NPR. In the case of Westmont, it's an elevator that helps to facilitate movement around that campus, and the NPR is shared with the adjacent Price campus. If we can go to the next slide. Now, I'll turn it over to Jomei Liao to walk through some of the diagrams within each of the categories.
Okay. Thank you, Jim. Good evening, everyone. Here, we're going to kind of give you a sample of some of the master plan diagrams that we updated for each of the categories that Jim had mentioned. We do have, you know, if there's a particular site you wanted to see but wasn't shared, we can scroll down to the bottom. I do have all of the sites available, but I just thought we'd just kind of give a snapshot of an example of each from each category. So category one was, you know, like either full modernization and reconstruction or full reconstruction scope. And the two sites that are in higher priority are Patrick Henry and Adelaide Price, and we'll be sharing those two sites tonight. So Patrick Henry. So next slide, please. So here's the master plan diagram for Patrick Henry. This would be a site where we would demolish the existing campus and build new. And here you can see the admin in the bottom left corner. It's like two-story construction, most of it, because it's such a tight school site. And then, you know, having the buildings organized around the central quad and then the playfields and hardcourts towards the north end there with a larger parking lot. Okay? Next school site, LA Price. This was, I think, for this school site, we were proposing a portion of it to be reconfigured as well as modernization, so very similar to the Sun Kids scope. And then the rest would be a new two-story classroom building as well as a new NPR that would also be shared with Westmont Elementary School, which is the school site that's adjacent to this campus.
And Jomei, we should highlight that the buildings that are showing up on, off the property line are actually the second floor of the floor plans.
Oh, yes, yes. They're not, we're not constructed on top of those houses or anything like that. That would be the second floor of the two-story construction. So the other option we also looked at for Adelaide Price was full reconstruction, which would be demolishing the existing campus. And obviously, this option would cost more than the previous one, but we were asked to look at both as comparisons so that the board would have a choice between the two. Okay? Any questions with those? Okay, if not, category two was specific focus on NPR Student Services and Library scope. And then in the phase first priority, those sites would be Benito Juarez and then Paul Revere, which would be Paul Revere, that school site would only have an NPR because they already have a pretty new library. And then phase two priority would be the Barton, Franklin, and Loera. Next slide, please. So here for Juarez, as you can see, we would be reconfiguring the existing library and classroom spaces to the Learning Center, which are Student Services, expanding the library so it's larger and more appropriate size and including the Innovation Lab there and then building a new NPR as well as the flexible lab and music classroom for them.
And the library and the Learning Center and those other spaces are the hatched areas in that center building.
Right. And then all the other buildings would, all the other gray areas basically would not be receiving work. So it'd be very targeted kind of scope. And for Paul Revere, again, like I said, they already have a library and therefore this would just be an addition of an NPR right there to the west of the parking lot there as well as a new parking lot north of their existing playfields so that to give them extra parking spaces. Okay, next slide. Clara Barton here, very similar to the other site, would be reconfiguration of existing classrooms to Learning Center, Student Services, and then a new NPR Music Classroom and Flex Lab in that northwest corner of the school site there. And then so that it would be easy access with the parking as well as food delivery services along the other street.
And then the library to the right.
Yes. So it'd be new library at the front there, next to the parking lot. Okay. And then the next one for Franklin. Again, this would be because due to the historic or community relevance of the existing library, we would leave that in place but do a full modernization reconfiguration as well in addition to that building so that it would be more appropriately sized for library, Innovation Lab, as well as the Learning Center functions. And then we'd also construct a new building where there are existing portables and some hardcourts there for the NPR Flex Lab and Music Classroom there. Okay, next slide. For Loera, this would be a new construction right there to the left. I think we would be removing just one set of the portables or modulators and then constructing a new structure there for NPR Library, Student Services altogether, and then reconfiguring two of their existing module classrooms to, for the two that were displaced because we had to build the new building there. And so again, keeping in mind adjacency to parking and access and food service as well. Next slide. And then category three, and that would be focused on Student Services and Library scope only. And the party in this category would be Thomas Edison, so we'll be sharing that today. Next slide. And so we're proposing the new library in this area, as you can see, with the Learning Center Innovation Lab, as well as a reconfiguring and some slight expansion of the existing parking lot just due to where the library is located and sort of addressing their issue with drop-off and pickup and traffic congestion at the same time along with the library, just due to where this building is situated. Okay?
So thank you, Jomei. And so now I'll walk through the budget cost summary. If we go to the next slide. So the costs that were done in the original master plan were all done in, I believe it was $2,016. And they're inclusive of hard construction and program soft costs. So they're what we refer to as total program costs. And what they do not include are the unknowns at this time. So utility hookup fees, off-site work, land acquisition costs, hazardous material or abatement escalation and temporary housing that might be needed during the construction. We have gone ahead and escalated all of the dollars from that facility's master plan up to $2,020. And if this were a normal master plan and we were looking out to say a six- to 10-year program, we would recommend that if you had $100 million available, that you wouldn't want to prioritize more than two-thirds of those dollars to projects in 2020 cost because you're going to need that other one-third for all those unknowns as well as escalation that might occur over the life of the program. However, because we know when some of the future bond drops might be and also know an idea of what might go in different potentially, potential phases, we can apply a specific escalation to those, and we'll be doing that here later in the presentation as opposed to just holding a one-third contingency aside. So if we go to the next slide. So in terms of the total cost for the category one sites, they're all approximately $60 million with three-quarters of that cost being for construction and the other quarter being for soft costs. Total's about $254 million. The category two sites, which is the new NPR and Student Services and Libraries, vary from a smaller one of only $11 million because there isn't a library, need for additional library at that campus, to a high of about $17 million because of some of the more site work at that site. But they're pretty, in a pretty close range in total, about $77 million for those projects. Category three, which is new libraries or NPRs only, not both on any one campus, those vary from the $1 million, which was the smaller scope of the elevator and some associated site work at Westmont, to a high of $11.7 million at Jefferson for the new NPR. And those total about $42 million for a total in $20,000 of about $373.5 million in total project cost. If we go to the next slide. We did have some options that we looked at for James Gwynn in terms of two different sizes of enrollment as well as mod and reconstruction versus total reconstruction. So you can see the Gwynn Campus could vary from a high of 63.8 to a low of 40.7 million, depending on the option selected. We did the same thing with Adelaide Price, not differing in terms of enrollment, but differing just in terms of scope of work. So full reconstruction was about $62 million and modernization reconstruction was about $51.5. If we go to the next slide. So the next thing that we did is we met with Tim Cardy to look at the funding and the bond drawdown schedule for some upcoming potential issuances. We go to the next slide. And also working with the district and the school sites, there were some discussions about what might be the next priority projects. So in category one, it was Patrick Henry Elementary School Reconstruction. In category two, it was all five sites in no particular order. In category three was Thomas Edison Elementary, and that's at Student Services and Library. And then in category one again, as a priority for Adelaide Price Elementary, and that could either be a reconstruction or comprehensive mod and reconstruction scope of work. Go to the next slide. So we're beginning to compare these project lists to the dollars that could potentially be available. May I apologize, it looks like the PowerPoint has jumped around a little bit with the fonts between the different projectors, either our computer or the district's projector. But the goals were to get all projects prioritized shovel-ready. And that as a goal, the district would need to expend 85% within three years and 5% of any of the bond issuances within six months. So looking at Measure G, which was the 2010 bond, there's a $30 million issuance proposed for 2021 going vertically, nothing in 2023, and the remaining $14.8 million in 2026 for the balance of that bond. So after 2026, there would be no further dollars available for Measure G. In terms of Measure J, looking at a $30 million issuance in 2021, $58 million in 2023, and $13.7 million in 2026 for a total of $101,700,000. That leaves remaining, have to correct me if I'm wrong here, Isella, but about, there were $225 million remaining in the Measure J. If we subtract that 101, that leaves just about $124 or $123 million still to be issued beyond 2026. So depending upon assessed value growth, obviously, that 2026 number could go up or could go down depending what happens in the future with assessed value. But there would be over $100 million of Measure J remaining. So totaling the-
Yeah, that's what, that's what you have, and that's what's kind of missing from the slides. As phase one is $123 million, phase two $28.5 million. So I think that's the-
Yeah, I think that comes up on the click.
Oh, I say you have to click it. Sorry.
Yeah, if we could actually click and go to the, yeah, there it is.
There you go.
So looking at 2021, it would total about $60 million available. 2023, another $58 million. 2026, a $28.5. But if we look at the work that is basically done by 2023, that would be that 60 plus 58 plus the $5 million down below in unencumbered funds that the district currently has, giving you about $123 million for projects that you could move forward at this time in terms of preparing plans. And then leaving $28.5 million for some other wave of projects in 2026. If we can go to the next slide. So looking at that, comparing that to the priorities, looking at the first one, Patrick Henry Elementary Reconstruction, that cost was about $63 million in $20,000. We applied two years of escalation at four and a half percent, and that takes that to about $69 million. Looking at the NPRs and the Student Services, those all total about $78.8-
$76.8.
$76.8 million. And with four years of escalation, that was about $91.6 or of a total of about $160 million. And available from '21 to '26 was $151 million. So we were a little over that. And we're going to get further down here into scenarios that actually match up closer with the funding. We go to the next slide. And then looking at the next phase of work beyond 2026, and that's talking about that other 100-plus million that's available from Measure J, that could potentially fund Adelaide Price, and we put eight years of escalation on that and added a 10% program contingency. So when we take all those numbers on that previous slide together with this, what's on this slide, that would total almost $274 million in terms of your projects with escalation. Looking at your revenue total, you have from '21 to '26, $151.5. Measure J remain- Measure J remaining 123.3. So that's about 274 to 275 million dollars in revenue. So it shows that all those projects that were prioritized could be done. It's just a matter of what's the order that we do those over time. And so that takes us into the next scenario. So if we go next slide and click. So looking at phase one, Patrick Henry Elementary School, click again. And also Benito Juarez Elementary, Paul Revere and Edison all being in phase one. And then in phase two, Claire Barton, Benjamin Franklin and Loera. And then if we go to the next slide. So we take the Patrick Henry, that's at 63 million. That totals to 69 with two years of escalation. We take the Juarez and Revere and the Thomas Edison and put that totals together 33.8 million dollars in $2020 with escalation, that's 36.9. And that that together with Patrick Henry adds up to almost 106 million. And you can see from now till 2023 that you had 123 million dollars available. So there is enough room to do the Patrick Henry, the Juarez, the Revere and Edison, all proceeding at this time and moving into construction between now and 2023. And you'd also have about 17 million dollars remaining. Now, if we go to the next slide. So that's in essence, the phase one scope of work. Right there. And then in terms of phase two, if we could click again. The phase two is those remaining NPRs for Claire Barton, Franklin and Loera, totaling 50.2 with four years of escalation. That's 59. We had an issuance in 2026 of 28.5 plus the 17 million remaining is about 45 million. And you can see we're a little bit short there. There's enough in the total program to fund it. But hopefully with some faster assessed value growth, the issuance in 2026 could potentially be larger to fund all three of those NPRs, or maybe two of them move forward at that time. But in essence, you're looking at not authorizing those projects for several years yet as you watch the market. And the phase one is really the projects that looking forward to potentially move ahead with with 123 million that the district has available right now. Or between now and 2023. And if we go to the next slide. So our next steps are to take the board input here today and then finalize this document. And then the district will be coming back to the board for board action in March in terms of that phase one project list. So we're now available for any questions that you might have or any comments on both the master plans as well as the potential phasing.
Doesn't appear that we have any questions. So I will say thank you very much for a very thorough presentation.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate it. And sorry, the the columns all got out of alignment. That sometimes happens when we translate between different computer systems. But I appreciate the good words. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you, Joe May.
Thank you.
Thank you to the entire team. Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Thank you for briefing us on this. As that was a presentation, not an action, I will go ahead and move on to item five. Item five A, so we have our news and updates, parent leadership group updates. There is one PLI parent leadership group update tonight. Take it away, Ms. Camacho.
The parent update was submitted by PLI parent Araceli Perez. It reads, Hello, my name is Araceli Perez, and I am a returning PLI parent leader at Marshall Elementary. Returning PLI parent leaders consist of year two and beyond PLI parents. I am in my fourth year with the institute. Returning PLI had a virtual meeting on February 4th where we gave input and suggestions for parent engagement when our students returned to in-school learning. In this virtual meeting, we also reviewed some of our leadership training to support our faces with the facilitation of the Virtual 10 Education Commandments Parent Workshop Series. We also have a group of returning PLI parent leaders who are facilitating the virtual sessions of the 10 ed commandments for a couple of sites who currently do not have faces. This week, they completed the four sessions and will continue supporting other sites virtually. Last week, on Friday, February 19th, a group of us PLI parent leaders, supported by being actors on the tapping of some school reopening behavior expectation parent videos with Jason Farrell at Marshall Elementary. Thank you for the opportunity allowing us to support other parents and in this case to be actors. Our next virtual PLI meeting will be March 4th at 2:00 PM, and that concludes the parent update.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Perez. Thank you, Ms. Camacho for reading that. Item five B, we have association updates. There are no association updates tonight. Item five C, district news and updates, communications and public information. There are no district news and updates tonight. Item number six, public speakers. These are speakers on agenda or non-agenda items. There is one public comment submitted. Go ahead, Ms. Camacho.
Yes, one public comment submitted by Tanya Sanchez, AESD parent. It reads, Our kids need to return back to school. We are doing a disservice to them by keeping them at home. We have so many kiddos suffering from mental health issues, homelessness and abuse. The school is their only safe haven, and we have taken that away from them. We are now going into one year of distance learning. We can reopen schools with the waiver. Those parents that want their children to return to school can do so. And parents that do not want their kids in school can always choose the online academy. Please, I ask that you truly consider our children and their well-being. They need to be back in school. That concludes the public comments.
All right. Thank you for the comment. We are moving on to item number seven, superintendent's report and public hearings. There are none. Item number eight, our consent calendar. Items listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and are acted on by the
I'm sorry, President Lopez, I think there is.
Yes.
There is a hearing right now. Dr. Downing?
Yes, 7A.
Oh, 7A?
Yes.
Okay, one of these days I'm going to read the entire agenda in the all the items in the order that they appear. That's not going to be tonight, but that will be one of these board meetings. So we'll go ahead and go to item number seven A. It is recommended the Board of Education declare a public hearing for the purpose of receiving public comments on the request for material revisions to Vibrant Minds Charter School Charter Petition. Vibrant Minds requests approval to operate an additional site at 1244 East Cypress Street, Anaheim, California. Written comments, up to 500 words, may be submitted online via the form that was listed on the agenda and must be received by 12:00 PM on Wednesday. Today, February 24, 2021. After hearing public comments from the public, the board president will close the hearing and vote on the item. Dr. Downing?
Comments?
Okay, no public comments. Is there a motion on this item?
Yes, on item seven B. It is
Okay, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. And then item seven B, it is recommended the Board of Education adopt resolution 202021/42, granting the request for material revisions to the Vibrant Minds Charter School Charter Petition. May have a motion on this item.
So moved. Relus.
Moved by trustee Relus.
Second, Philbeck.
Second by clerk Philbeck. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, we'll take a roll call vote. Dr. Magalas? You're still muted.
All right. Sorry about that. I
Thank you, trustee Relus.
Aye.
Trustee Alvarez?
Aye.
Or clerk Philbeck?
Aye.
Also vote aye. That passes 5-0. Now we will move on to the consent calendar. Item number eight, consent calendar. Items listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and are acted on by the board in one motion. There's no discussion on these items unless a member of the board, staff, or the public requests specific items to be discussed and or removed from the consent calendar. Is there a motion for the consent calendar?
So moved. Relus.
Thank you, trustee Relus. Moved by trustee Relus.
Second Alvarez.
Seconded by, thank you, trustee Alvarez. Any discussion? Hearing hearing none. Dr. Magalas?
Aye.
Thank you, trustee Relus.
Aye.
Trustee Alvarez?
Aye.
For clerk Philbeck?
Aye.
I also vote aye. That passes 5-0. Moving on to item number nine. Our action calendar, nine A, superintendent's office has recommended the Board of Education vote for no more than nine candidates for the 2021 Region 15 CSBA Delegate Assembly. Delegates will serve a two-year term, April 1st, 2021 through March 31st, 2023. Is there a motion for this item?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second Alvarez.
Magalas seconded by trustee Alvarez. Discussion?
So during discussion, just to clarify, this is when we do our nomination, correct?
No.
No? Okay.
May I go ahead, President Lopez?
Yes, please. Board clerk Philbeck, go ahead.
This is to actually vote for the delegates for Region 15 for CSBA, of which I know we we've all gotten the list. And so full disclosure, I am on the list because I'm up for reappointment, as are several others. I think there are let's see, give me one second. One, two, three, four, five, seven that are up for that are incumbents. And then there's three or four more that are on, you know, running for the first time. So you, we can vote for up to nine, but we do not have to vote for nine. We can, I know that in other years that this has been done, we've voted for two or three or four. And so and school boards do that. They don't necessarily. I have the list in front of me. My suggestion would be, I have served a term, two years on CSBA. And this year was very different because of the pandemic. And so we actually, and plus we have a Pacer, which is someone who helps facilitate legislatively and everything for us. But I can honestly say that this whole year has, I've been in so many meetings with CSBA because we've done a lot of Zoom meetings. And, you know, for budgets and reopenings and everything. And I can honestly say that everybody that is an incumbent and running for an additional term, I would, I would support. Again, full disclosure, I'm I'm on the list also. I would hope that you will support me in that. But regarding the others, I got to know these people. And they, there's not one that I would say, you know, isn't worthy. They're all worthy. So I would suggest that we vote to include all of the incumbents. And if you need the names, I have those. And with the addition of, I would also recommend Diana Hill from Los Alamos USD. Sorry, I don't really know the others or can't really offer a comment. But you, you're, you all certainly can look at that list and see if there's anybody you recognize.
May I ask trustee Philbeck, why would you recommend her? Just out of curiosity.
Who, Diana? Just because I'm familiar with people that know her and and how long she's, you know, been involved and from the Los Alamos Board, just a, she's just been highly recommended. That's all. Through some talking to other delegates, talking to, you know, different people involved, I just kind of that's the only one I really had some additional information that came with a strong recommendation. Not that the others don't. It's just I'm not aware of it. So I would say, look at the names. If you want, I can read them. And
So there are 12 names on here. So as a board right now, we're picking nine. Is that correct or voting for nine?
You can choose up to nine.
Okay.
You can choose up to nine. But I would, you know, I think that the first part of that would, there, there isn't anybody that's an incumbent that I would not suggest that we, you know, I suggest we vote for them. And then the others are open. So technically, there's, you know, you can appoint, I believe, two more. I think there's eight incumbents. One, two, three, four, six, there's seven incumbents. I'm sorry, seven incumbents. So there's an additional two more that can be added. And I'm not aware if any of you board members know any of the other ones or
I just recommend Gina Clayton, of course you Jackie Philbeck and Aljabar. So those are the three that I would like to have on here.
I want to add to Apollo saying, I'm not comfortable voting for people to represent us as a CSBA body. If I don't know who they are, what policies they would support. All due respect, board member Philbeck, even though you might have possibly worked with some of the incumbents. If if I don't know physically their work, I don't feel comfortable saying, hey, here's my vote. But I do feel comfortable with anyone who I've seen work and seen invest into our communities, you being one of them, right? And in looking at this list, I only know of people who would be representative of people I know who are out there doing things for our communities. I would agree, Junickley and Tarvin and Aljabar are the only ones I see on there that I would be comfortable supporting at this time.
I agree.
Okay, I mean, I was just offering it because I literally have worked with most of these people for a year now. And I, you know, could vouch that they are strong delegates. But I'm happy to go with whatever the consensus of the the board of the board is. I'm not exactly clear on what that was, what you, who you want to add, but whoever
I would agree with Dr. Magalas, you for sure. And then Junickley and Tarvin and Aljabar are the only people I've seen advocating for communities.
And I agree with Dr. Magalas and trustee Alvarez.
And that's fine with me. If that's what the board decides, fine.
Okay, is there, is there a motion on this? I think we had a motion for our discussion by Magalas and a second by Alvarez. So I have Gina Clayton Tarvin. Sorry for butchering that name. Aljabar and Jackie Philbeck for our three. And I don't believe we have to recuse anybody on this vote.
No.
Understand, we don't have to. Okay, so Mr. Magalas, did you have anything else you'd like to add?
No, I just definitely, definitely value your expertise since you've been so involved in CSBA, Jackie. I really appreciate it. I just, and with Juan, I don't know the other board members, but thank you so much for that.
That's fine. It's fine. I, you know, I'm totally fine with that. I appreciate that you're willing to vote for me. I'd like to, to, actually, I learned a lot this past year. So it's kind of, I would like to continue on and see what the next couple of years would bring and and how much, especially since we're coming out of this pandemic. And so I appreciate the confidence in in a vote for me. Thank you.
All right. And thank you for your insights as well, board clerk Philbeck. And kind of letting us know how everything's been going the last year. We appreciate that. And we'll go ahead and take a roll call vote. Trustee Dr. Magalas?
Aye.
Trustee Relus?
Aye.
Trustee Alvarez?
Aye.
Board clerk Philbeck?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. Passes 5-0. We will forward those names wherever they need to go. Dr. Downing, thank you. Item nine A2, it is recommended the Board of Education receive for first reading revisions to the following board policies and administrative regulations. We have item A here, BP4119.25 dot 4219 dot 25. Thank you very much, Dr. Magalas. So motion
Relus.
Seconded by trustee Relus. Any discussion on this item?
I just want to say that I think it's great that we're constantly updating our policies and whatnot. I think that's really admirable of this district because there's some districts that don't really. And so And so I just want to give a shout out to, uh, our amazing Anaheim Elementary School District.
All right, thank you for that shout out, uh, trustee Relus. Uh, we'll go ahead and seeing no other discussion, take a roll call vote, Dr. Magalas.
Aye.
Trustee Relus?
Aye.
Trustee Alvarez?
Aye.
Board clerk Philbeck?
Aye.
I also vote aye, passes five zero. Item nine A. Suppose this is three, it is recommended the board of education approve the appointment of employee number zero two two four two zero two one dash zero one to the position of director of transportation, effective date to be determined. Is there a motion for this item?
So moved, Alvarez.
Thank you trustee Alvarez.
Relus.
Seconded by trustee Relus, any discussion? Hearing none, I will take a roll call vote, uh, Dr. Magalas.
Aye.
Trustee Relus?
Aye.
Trustee Alvarez?
Aye.
Board clerk Philbeck?
Aye.
I also vote aye, passes five zero, uh, Ms. Meland, did you have an announcement for us?
I sure do, thank you. Congratulations to AESD's new transportation director, Donna Wittenberg. Donna has served AESD as transportation operations supervisor since January of two thousand sixteen and has been in the transportation field, serving in various capacities for over twenty years. Please help us welcome Donna as she transitions into the position of transportation director tomorrow morning. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Meland, and congratulations to, uh, our new transportation director. Uh, Dr. Downing, did you have anything you wanted to add?
No, just congratulations, it was a robust process and, uh, Donna, congratulations to you for being selected.
All right, great, thank you very much, congratulations again. Item E administrative services, there are none, uh, so we will move on to item number ten. Board discussion, board member activities related to school business. We will begin with Dr. Palo Magalas.
Thank you so much, Mr. President, uh, since the last couple of weeks, I've only, uh, done two things. Uh, I did do two, uh, visits to, uh, one at Stoddard Elementary School and one at, uh, Betsy Ross Elementary, uh, so extremely thankful for the principals who showed me around. Uh, particularly proud of the amount of PPE and safeguards and procedures, uh, in preparation for the possible reopening, so, uh, thank you so much to the principals for showing me around.
All right, thank you, Dr. Magalas, trustee Relus?
Awesome, thank you, uh, President Lopez. Um, so on the nineteenth, which was a Friday, uh, it was great, that was my day of conferencing and chatting with people, uh, as I was walking, uh, my dog, um, and I was able to have great, great, great conversations with, um, Dr. Perez from James Gwen. Um, Ms. Nichols from Edison and, um, Stephanie, uh, Schumate, uh, from Sunkist, and basically I was just doing a quick check-in to see how things are going. Um, how they're feeling, how are their kids feeling, et cetera. And I just have to say, it's always, when I finish these conversations, I always just leave super excited and rejuvenated because it's lots of positive stuffs going on, you know, it's like our last presentation that Dr. Grace shared with us of all the great things that are occurring um, still in our district and, and all the great things that are taking place, even in a virtual setting. And, and so I just want to, um, just give kudos to those principals for really just having an answer for every single one of my questions that I posed, um, and just really, um, walking me through it, uh, you know, uh, their days and their weeks and how everything's going. Uh, I was able to feel, I felt like I got a pretty good, uh, temperature check on that, and so I appreciate them. Um, on the twenty-second, uh, I was able to, with a couple of my colleagues, uh, go and surprise the, uh, two teacher, like finalists, I guess, for Anaheim Elementary School District, um, in their virtual classrooms, which was super fun, it was really cool to engage with them. I learned about counting, uh, my numbers, counting by ten, it was great. Um, I just want to say shout out to all of the teachers of the year in this district, um, and a special shout out and a best of luck towards Ms. Weatherall as well as Ms. Dabbert, um, kudos to both of you, um, you make us proud, represent, um, good luck on that packet that you need to submit to the Orange County Department of Ed, and let's, let's proceed to the finals, uh, or the semifinals or finals, you know, I don't know how it works, um, and, uh, go from there, so that was very exciting. And then, um, today, the last thing I was able to do was, um, before, actually about one thirty today till about three thirty, um, I was able to go and, um, attend the bilingual ambassadors, uh, meet and greet kind of study, uh, session stuff that they had with Anaheim High School students, um, and Anaheim Elementary School students, um, from Price and from Juarez and from Lincoln. And it was awesome mainly because of the fact that they played games in the beginning, um, you know, um, it, it was fun in cahoots and it was about cocoa and it was an espanyol, so it was great. Uh, and, uh, then afterwards, they went and broke out into, uh, rooms, um, based on the area that they felt they needed help with, and it was a study session with the high school students as well as the teachers that were there from Anaheim Elementary School District, uh, you know, representing. And just really proud of all the great things taking place, and that concludes my report, thank you.
Thank you trustee Relus, sounds like a productive couple of weeks and you learned some life skills, counting by ten, so that's great, thank you very much, uh, trustee Alvarez.
Thank you, uh, just want to extend my congratulations to all of our educators of the year as well, um, so super proud of all of you for the hard work you're doing, especially during these times. Um, I say educators because some of our winners are also counselors and, or they do other jobs in our districts, so kudos to everybody. I did, uh, get the opportunity to visit, uh, Ms. Dabbert's classes, uh, so Monday as well as a surprise to give her, uh, some kudos for being selected to move forward through the county teacher of the year. Uh, uh, very familiar sounds of kindergarten were going on, uh, um, counting and things like that. It's really, uh, really kind of, um, impressive for me to see, uh, another educator in action and, and being able to manage five-year-olds is an incredible talent, so congratulations to her and, and every other kindergarten through sixth grade teacher, even pre-k teacher that's doing the hard work out there. We know you're working hard and you all deserve these kudos because they're all doing the work, so fantastic job, everybody. Uh, I haven't been able to do much of other district business, I've been trying to take some time to kind of reflect and get through some, uh, troubling times. Uh, but I do want to extend a heartfelt thank you and hug to every single person out there in the district community who has sent a card or flowers or food or gift cards or just texts and calls saying how much, uh, you guys all love us and you're there for us, and, uh, we really do appreciate that. Some days those messages and those, uh, shows of love and affection kind of, they help you get through and move forward, so everything that, that's being out, done out there to support us as a family is really appreciated and we love you all. And we, uh, appreciate being part of this family, so thank you so much, that's my report.
All right, thank you very much trustee Alvarez, we appreciate it, um, board clerk Philbeck?
Yes, and, um, Mr. Alvarez, my condolences, I think all of us feel the same way in the loss of your mother. And it, you definitely have been hit, I think, the hardest of anyone I know, so, um, I will just begin with, um, right after the last board meeting, I think it was around the twelfth, I went to the district for the food giveaway, uh, for the drive-through food giveaway, and I, I was just amazed, um, I want to say, Dr. Grace, is, is there about eight hundred cars that go through that on Friday? Eight hundred to a thousand, I think, or that's, I believe what someone told me, like eight hundred cars.
Jesse has.
That, that, that was the count the last time, and we served almost a thousand and seven kid, seven-day kid meals, yes.
Okay, I mean, that was so impressive to me, that was just huge, and what a, what a, um, great operation. I mean, there, those cars were just driving through and took a few seconds and it's just so organized, so I enjoyed getting to visit that. Um, back to regarding the CSBA delegation, uh, we did have a meeting. Uh, those meetings, I think, are important because all of the school districts from not just our county, but, you know, all over are included on this delegates, and we really, I've really learned a lot about what other districts are, are doing. And it, this one focused on, of course, uh, state reopening plan. But also we had conversations on completing deferral payments, on, uh, one-time funding instead of competitive grants. And also an interesting discussion on, uh, honesty or acceptable use policies, and so I was going to request, Dr. Grace, if you might be able to put something in our Friday memo. I think that is something that kind of, uh, parallels or associates with our common sense school campaigns that's going on, is that correct? So if we could just get a little more information on that. Um, I also sat in on a, another Zoom for the parent advisory committee, um, which was an overview of what it's going to look like to bring the children back on campus for blended learning and details of that learning model, um. It was looked at it from a parent's perspective and from the preschooler's perspective. So there was an interesting request from a parent, I wanted to see if maybe we could, uh, it, to me, it sounded like a good idea, the parent was saying that, uh, their preschooler associated masks with being at the doctor, with people who are doctors or medical professions. And so she had suggested, uh, would we be able to maybe put out some pictures, even a short video of the preschool teachers or early development child people that, that have their masks and that don't. So the kids could say, oh, this is what their teacher looks like with it, and this is what they look like without it. So that was a request made from a parent, I don't know if we can maybe do something like that, but thank you to the people that I mostly associate with on this, um, advisory are Maria Viegas, Viviana Jelinek and Carolyn Gonzalez and Linda Duran, so thank you for all the work that they do. We had a short fifteen-minute Ross Park Complex virtual ribbon cutting. Uh, we are through phase one, we are opening March first. And what will open on the first are going to be, we will have six turf arenas. Now, they're not ready for soccer yet, but what we will be using them for are, uh, preschool sports clinics. And also we'll be offering exercise programs for the late teens to the older adults. We are on to phase two, um, which several million dollars more, but we're getting there. And this has been a multi-year project, so, um, it was exciting to see actually that we're, we're going to open on March first with our phase one. I also attended the teacher of the year, so I'll just mention that, that I was very excited that they just happened to be teachers from, um, schools in my district, both of them, Ms. Weatherall from Man, I believe, and Ms. Dabbert from Franklin, is that correct? Mary? That's good, that's correct, Mary, but anyways, we, that is correct. Okay, we, we certainly are proud of them and appreciate all of our teachers and the hard work that they put in, um, you know, especially this past year, but it's always nice, it's, it's a fun time when it's teacher of the year, and I always enjoy that. Um, EDI meeting, our focus was on early childhood development, how do we get the info out to parents? How do we share data? And there were some great discussions, uh, about bringing our parents on board into this task force, sort of like DLI, training them and like we did, like we did Parent Leadership Institute. So there was a lot of, we broke out into rooms and that was one of the strongest suggestions. Um, I also visited a vaccination site on Saturday, not, I was not vaccinated, but I had some seniors that I took. Um, and saw some people I knew there, so thank you, I just wanted to say thank you to Supervisor JP's office and also Aljabar for coordinating that, Ariselli, uh, Chavez gave me a lot of help with my seniors that, because it was kind of like herding cats for a few minutes there, so, thank you, Ariselli, he really helped me. Um, and last, we had a Zoom call today, Dr. Downing was part of it. Um, a legislative Zoom call with Senator Tom Umberg. And I think it was one of the best legislative meetings that was put on through CSBA again. And there was, um, each school district got to give a report. Uh, Dr. Downing represented us very well, and he was even asked a question from Senator Umberg, which he answered like that and right on the spot, and it was a great answer. Um, we were able to give a report on our district and also everyone got to kind of highlight what challenges we feel we're facing. But I'd also like to say that Dr. Downing was one of the few superintendents, he follows the rules, he looks at the directions. And when it says each district gets three minutes, I mean, you can do a stopwatch. And that was also noted, and I was really proud of that because, you know, actually the senator had to extend the meeting because, um, there's a lot to say, but some kind of, you know, have to go beyond that. But Dr. Downing, he gets it all in, he does it in the time that they suggest, he represents us well. And I'm like, I want to be more like him. So, thank you, Dr. Downing, you really represented us well, and I was really proud of you that even the, uh, moderator was like, wow! That was like three minutes to the second, so, I was really proud of you for that and, and appreciated that, and that's my report. Uh, thank you so much for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you, board clerk Philbeck, for the very thorough report, and, uh, thank you, Dr. Downing, for being a model of efficiency. We appreciate that, uh, we expect nothing less from you, so thank you very much. Uh, I just wanted to give a quick report on, uh, some of my ongoing meetings with, uh, different school sites, so I would also like to thank, thank Dr. Downing and his staff for helping to organize a lot of these and coordinate uh, meeting with the different sites, a lot of good, um, conversation, a lot of good, uh, questions coming up. Not a lot of good answers all the time, but, uh, I do my best, uh, and at these different meetings, uh, I met with Revere back on February eleventh, I was able to meet with, uh, Gwen and Gower on February sixteenth, and on the eighteenth, I was able to meet with, uh, Clara Barton Elementary. So look forward to meeting with a lot of the other campuses in the coming weeks. Um, it, there, there, you know, we have twenty-four of them, so, uh, I'm almost halfway through, so I'm making some headway. Um, it, I, something that I would rather, I think, as we all would, would be able to meet with them in person as we did last year, but, uh, there's quite a good turnout. Uh, even the seven AM meetings that we've been having, a lot of the staff, uh, waking up a little extra early uh, to tune in on the meetings and, uh, then after school as well, uh, about three o'clock to three PM. So we've been having a lot of good, uh, discussion and, um, kind of just reintroducing myself to some of the staff, uh, has been a good, uh, experience, so thank you for that. Uh, we'll go ahead and go to our next item, let's conclude my remarks with that, item number twelve, I'm sorry, item number eleven. Uh, future board items, uh, Dr. Magalas, do you have any future board items? Uh, trustee Relus, any future items, uh, trustee Alvarez, board clerk Philbeck? Nor do I, no future items. Uh, with that, I will go ahead and conclude our meeting, our adjournment, item number twelve, we are, we stand in adjournment and our next board meeting is a special board meeting on Wednesday, March third. I adjourned this meeting at seven thirty-five PM, thank you, have a great night, be safe.
Bye, everyone.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, everyone.